Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the first August work session of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Holroyd.
President.
Mrs. Knoll.
Here.
Mr. Drury.
President.
Mr. Roan.
Here.
Mr. Shepard.
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you very much. We've got two presentations tonight, but we will do the one about the resilience adaptation feasibility tool. Thank you, Caitlin, very much. I'm anxious to hear all about this.
Absolutely. All right, well, he won't see me for very long, so I'm here mostly to introduce the RAF team who's going to be presenting to you tonight. So this is an effort that we've been engaged with since February, and not to steal their funder, so I'll let them kind of explain what the RAF is, what the process we're undertaking, and what our next steps are going to be. Essentially, this is an effort that's born from, began in 2015, and it's a collaboration between UVA, Institute of Engagement and Adaptation, along with ODU's Institute of Coastal Resilience. So that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Jessica Whitehead, Wendy Stout, Elizabeth Andrews, and Heather Whitehead. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for the invitation, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Jessica Whitehead. I'm the Executive Director of the Institute for Coastal Adaptation and Resilience at Old Dominion University. When we do these presentations, we always do them as a team, so I will also be joined by Elizabeth Andrews at UVA and Wendy Stout with Virginia Tech's Coastal Collaborator. We've had the pleasure of being able to work with a number of residents from York County, really engaged staff over the past few months with launching our effort on the resilience adaptation feasibility tool in the Historic Triangle. This round, we are, York County is one of three localities going through this process. We're also concurrently working with Williamsburg as well as James City County. And what the RAF does, it stands for Resilience Adaptation Feasibility Tool, but what's more important than the acronym is what its purpose is. And it exists as a process to help Virginia's localities and tribal nations to improve their environmental, economic, and social resilience to climate change and other stresses through a community-centered collaborative approach. It is very much a team effort. The full team from UVA includes Tanya Denkla-Cobb, who's the director, and Elizabeth Andrews, who you'll get to meet today. I am the leadership point of contact for ODU, and Dr. Wendy Stout is the leadership contact for the James City County Implementation Team. For our York County Implementation Team, I'm also joined in project management and facilitation by Dr. Trang Lee, who is an Assistant Research Professor with ICAR, and very newly joined by Andrew Larkin, who is our newly hired, as of last Thursday, Assistant Director for Engagement with ICAR. The good news is that he is very familiar with the RAF, having come to us from a 27-year career with NOAA, including as the Chesapeake Bay Program Officer. So we're very, very glad to have him join us. And I think, Elizabeth, this is your next slide. I'll let you take over the center chair.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having us. I'm Elizabeth Andrews with UVA, as Jess said, and the RAF has been around, actually, for about a decade. We started with three pilot communities, the city of Portsmouth, the county of Gloucester, and the town of Cape Charles, so geographic diversity and also municipality-type diversity. And they helped us to develop a scorecard, we're going to talk about in a minute, to score how much resilience is incorporated into a local government's policies and programs and ordinances. We launched, in partnership with the Planning District Commission, on the eastern shore, next, then the northern neck, then the middle peninsula. Then in Crater Planning District Commission, we worked with Petersburg and Hopewell, two very under-resourced cities, so we limited it to those two. We've worked with some tribal nations, four of them, two that we're working with currently and two previously, and have launched in southwest Virginia in two localities as well. And we're excited now to be working in the Historic Triangle, Williamsburg, James City County, and York Town, York County. And what we're doing is, we're presenting the results to the different elected bodies in the three jurisdictions, and then we will be having a regional workshop, and then we'll be launching a year of implementation. So I think I just tapped the right side. I want to do the arrow. Or I will. I'm doing all three.
Good space.
Space. Thank you. The one I didn't draw. All right. Thank you. So, as I just mentioned, the RAF is, it's a three-step process. We did the scoring with the scorecard. We also concurrently did a qualitative assessment, which involved focus groups and interviews and surveys. And then we're going to host a community workshop on August 18th. You'll hear more about that in a moment, where representatives of the localities can come together and look at their different opportunities and select some projects to work on for a year of implementation. And we support the localities in that year of implementation. As Jessica said, ODU's taking the lead with you all, and UVA is working with Williamsburg, and Virginia Tech is working with James City County.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, at the very beginning, I feel like I just woke up and didn't have my coffee. What exactly is, you talk about resilience. Resilience in what?
That's a great question. You did have your coffee. So resilience is actually different things to a lot of different people. That's why it's such a great question. We define resilience very broadly. What we look at in the scorecard and in the qualitative assessment is social resilience, economic resilience, and environmental resilience, because you can't have one or the other.
It sounds like you're implying that it's a resilience, you had to go from something bad to something good, or fall back to go forward, or what, so...
So, all kinds of different stresses and challenges that especially here are coastal communities face, and more severe storm events, more severe flooding going on, things like that. So developing your resilience means developing a community that can handle that across the board, whether it's emergency response, infrastructure planning, planning for your social network and your more vulnerable communities.
If I substitute capability for resilience, would that...
I think that's a great substitution. Yeah, capability, ability to respond and to actually thrive at the end of the day, to survive and thrive and...
Survivability.
Survivability. Those are all great words.
In the military, they kind of called it a surge, you know, if you had to do that. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So, sorry to interrupt.
No, I appreciate the question. Thank you. So, these are the five in the circle, the five scorecard categories, and policy leadership and collaboration kind of speaks for itself. Risk assessment and emergency management, that's often the category people would expect when you're talking about responses to hazards.
May I ask a favor? Because I don't, we don't have this on the screen, and I would love to have a copy of that.
I think Caitlin, are you going to share that? Or do you want us to do it?
I'm going to share that with the board's correspondence package.
I find...
The board's correspondence package next week, ma'am.
Okay.
You're going to remember all this for two weeks, right?
There'll be questions at the end. Thank you, Caitlin. So, risk assessment and emergency management is a category that a lot of people expect, as well as infrastructure resilience, that's so important. Planning for resilience is key, as you can imagine, comprehensive plans, hazard mitigation plans, things that our localities are engaging with already. And then the category that often takes folks a little by surprise, and where communities often score a little lower, is community engagement, health, and well-being, because that's something that we address in this, because we address resilience so broadly, as we're just talking about. So, we had focus groups, we had individual interviews. For those who couldn't attend the focus groups, we did surveys. We had over 50 responses from representing 25 different organizations. And we go through and we score. There's a professor at Old Dominion University, she couldn't join us tonight, but she oversaw some students in doing the scoring, and so you can have her, give sympathy to her for reading through all of those ordinances, comprehensive plans, hazard mitigation plan. And for the qualitative assessment, that's, again, it's done concurrently with the scorecard, the quantitative assessment. These are the key themes that came out for the region. One is that there's a service-oriented community. You probably are not surprised to hear that the region is characterized by strong collaboration among nonprofits and local governments, the community members. But service providers are increasingly feeling the strain by funding cuts and growing community needs. Economic disparities, those were raised frequently because the region's tourism-driven economy does rely heavily on low-wage hourly jobs, which can create a stark divide between the service workers and the higher-income residents. And some of the vulnerable neighborhoods face compounded challenges, including limited access to healthcare and food and transportation. Demographic shifts. A growing retirement population brings wonderful opportunities and challenges, both. While retirees contribute to volunteerism in the community and the philanthropy, many may eventually require services they could no longer afford. And finally, access and affordability. Affordable housing is something we hear about all the time in the news across America, but it remains a critical issue, particularly in rural areas lacking public infrastructure, was noted in some of the more rural areas of the region. And many residents struggle to access essential services due to limited public transit and language barriers and geographic isolation. And now I think I send it back to Jess.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. So, what were the results for York County? I have to say that York County is one of the higher-scoring counties that we have ever done throughout the RAF, and is well ahead of both Williamsburg and James City County in terms of its score received. Taking a look at the scorecard, one thing that we always emphasize with this is that you shouldn't interpret it as a grade. We actually very specifically don't put letter grades on this. What we do is, we look at the number of points that you receive, compare that to the possible number of points, and then think forward into, how can you use that to target actions in these different categories? We refer to them as opportunities across the five categories where we scored. So, for York County, have a total score of 91 out of 113. And as you can see, some takeaways from this, again, York County's scores were much higher than those of the other RAF localities and higher than those in the region. The highest-scoring areas of the five areas were in risk assessment and emergency management, and in community engagement, health, and well-being. Those are areas which are, particularly with community engagement, health, and well-being, tend to be our lower-scoring categories. And so I wanted to make sure to emphasize that York County is starting from a very good baseline here. You're already doing a lot of good work. That said, having a score doesn't automatically mean you check a box and you're resilient. There's always things that we can do better, and there's always more and more ways to develop how we deal with flexibility and nimbleness in a community to be able to respond to the changing stresses that we experience. So, comprehensive plan and land use ordinances are very good at incorporating and supporting resilience, and found a lot of opportunities as well for incentive programs to promote resilience that could be supplementing a regulatory-based approach.
Going back to the scores, were they derived from the study groups? So there were questions that people asked about policy leadership and collaboration, and based on their responses, that generated a score of 16?
Yep. There were the interviews, there was also the actual analysis of the written plans. So, we took a look at what is in the regional hazard mitigation plan, we took a look at the comprehensive plan, and looked for the components that are in that, in addition to focus group interviews and surveys.
So they were looked at against a standard that the RAF had developed for collaboration and for risk assessment?
Absolutely. And really, in a lot of these, it's, is something present or is it not? And so, in a lot of cases, we had places where you had elements that were present. So, that was, I think, an exceptionally positive score to be able to get.
What's, I don't, okay, so with the other communities in general sense, why is this, why is the, I have to go back, question, no, the, right there, the risk assessment, emergency management, and all that health stuff and well-being, why is that such a problem? Why is it, what's driving it to be low elsewhere?
And in other places? That's a good question. And Elizabeth, I don't know if, you have more experience going all the way back to the earliest RAF cases than I do.
I was going to say, you want to talk about James City County?
He's happy to answer for James City County. So, one of the...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yep.
So I can address that for James City County, but I can't address it for City of Williamsburg. Wendy Stout from Virginia Tech, and I'm the lead for the James City County RAF assessment and implementation. And for James City County, what we found with them is that there was several opportunities and things that they were doing in their locality that they were not identifying as resilience items. So, there were things that they had in place, but they weren't connecting them in the way that would make them resilient. And so they weren't able to get a point for it in their assessment because they had not made those connection points.
Could you give us an example?
So, yeah, so one of the things that we noted in the health and well-being category is that they had programs for families that would have qualified, specifically, I think, that they were doing a library program where they were going to, in the way that they just made those descriptions and those plans.
You raise a question in your study, because it sounds, I mean, you created a framework for your study, but the county was doing something anyway, but it made, it just didn't fit your framework.
Well, no, they didn't identify it in their plans. So, I think that the disconnect there is that they are, they have an opportunity that they can do that in the future, that they can make those connections.
So they didn't allow for expanding beyond the whatever they were doing at that point, is what you're saying?
Right.
Where they had something good going, but it was probably the inability to sustain it or something.
They had tied it together.
Okay.
So I see the opportunity for James City County's score to go, you know, to be higher after they go through this process, because now they are aware, and they'll add them to the plans next time.
They understand better now.
They do.
They understand. Sometimes this is thrown out, and people are not quite sure how to answer the question.
Exactly.
So you measure mainly against the existence of these programs as opposed to the quality of the programs, right?
It's an either-or, like...
Either have collaboration as part of it, or you don't.
We don't evaluate the quality.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that that's, that's something that can be fairly objective.
Exactly.
Or subjective.
Subjective, yes, I would think that's a better word.
It might help to, we strove to make it objective, to make a yes or no in the scorecard, so it's a quantitative assessment, it's not a subjective, one person saying, "I think that's pretty good," you know? But it might help just to read the description, for example, of the risk assessment and emergency management category examines how well a locality has conducted risk assessments to prepare for coastal storm hazards, identified vulnerable populations and their needs during or after a coastal storm hazard, and developed plans for disaster preparedness, including a hazard mitigation plan.
So, with a lot of those examples, and you'll have in your packet all of the materials that we have so far, we worked to propose a number of opportunities. We started with a list of 20, based on what we've seen in other localities, and then worked with Caitlin and a number of staff to winnow these down to about 10. When we go to the public and we try to narrow this down, 20 is often a lot. So we tried to identify what the staff think are the most important things to put in. And in addition to having those 10 staff-identified opportunities, we also asked them to say, if you have what, your top two opportunities, that you would like to make sure that we make progress on over the next year. One key thing about these opportunities is, it may be something that takes a long time to accomplish, but we're looking for opportunities that you can make progress on during a year. The top two that staff identified were, we pushed together in leadership, adopting the NOAA sea level rise projections and incorporating those into a flood resilience plan, and the efforts that the county has on the CRS, the Community Rating System, to work from a class seven to improve to a class six. So that was a very, very high priority that staff would like to make sure that we address progress on during this year. And the second opportunity was in resilience planning. Again, in the idea of you're doing things but making those explicit connections, being able to align the CIP with some of the preservation actions that are happening, taking a look at feasibility studies that are being needed, and incorporating some of these actions into existing programs like park and stormwater upgrades, so that you lower that barrier to implementation. You're looking for the easiest ways to get as many win-wins as you possibly can. The other opportunities that came up under risk assessment, conducting a business impact assessment, and incorporating some of those risk profiles into a hazard mitigation plan, specifically to ensure that economic vulnerabilities and recovery priorities are fully addressed. I used to do a lot of work in disaster recovery. There is very little information and support out there nationally for businesses. And so this is something where, as we're seeing more and more disasters with longer and longer recoveries, that is becoming a lot more common as a need to recognize businesses need the same recovery help as individuals and homeowners do.
Well, I read that it's conducted business impact. Is that for the county, or is that for the businesses in the county?
That would be for the businesses in the county.
In the county.
Yep. Infrastructure resilience, using stormwater plans to advance green infrastructure and environmental habitat goals. Also coordinating with the regional planning efforts and the nonprofits that are out there to work on how to have criteria to evaluate proposed development based on resilience impact. And then offering fund matching or tax incentive programs for homeowners and property owners to incentivize nature-based landscaping projects. Those are the things that help you, not just with your water quality, but also managing your stormwater, because we tend to have a lot more infiltration from those nature-based features. And then finally, closing it out as opportunities that staff identified within their top, I think we ended up not, with nine, because we ended up combining two in one of those top two. The, under resilience planning, again, considering those additional incentives for property owners who are both building and maintaining eligible natural and nature-based features. And then a couple for community engagement, looking at developing and adopting a written policy statement about the roles that residents and businesses and other stakeholders have in resilience. And it's really important to recognize in building resilience that is not the sole responsibility of the government, it's also not the sole capacity of the government to do so. And then in community engagement, collaborating with those local youth groups, elders, service providers, and nonprofits to get the message out about coastal resilience and what people can do and be able to help make those connections. That's the kind of work where recognizing that staff are already doing a whole lot, when you can tap into the members of your community to have them be a part of this process, it not only engages their ownership, it also takes some of that burden off of staff for having to do anything. And with that, Wendy, you're already here, so do you want to close it out and talk about the workshop?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Whitehead. So, we are really excited to share, I think Jess touched on this, and Elizabeth touched on it too, that the resilience action checklist has already partially done. The top two that Jess referred to earlier are things that the locality staff chose, and that was based on the opportunity list, and so they reviewed those and came up with two items. And that was developed, that opportunity list was developed from the review of the qualitative documents, like the different plans, the hazard mitigation plan and other comprehensive plan, capital improvement plan, and also through the interviews and the assessment piece. So, now in the workshop, what we're going to do is look at those items that, from the opportunity list, and have the citizens, a community-led process, to decide the other three of the top five that will be pursued in that year of implementation. And so the citizens will actually have a voice, and they'll actually, now, we have the top 10 that the locality decided on, based on the input, that will be shared with them, and so that will be, they'll know that these are the top 10, but they may decide to choose something different. And so they will have the opportunity to add to and say, you know, "These are also things that we care about and that we would like to consider." And so that will be a collaborative process, and we will have, all three localities will come together, and then we'll break out into breakout rooms and be able to discuss things that are very specific to that locality.
What's the timeframe for all of this?
So that's on the next slide.
Thank you. I'll drop the gun each time.
You were on top of things. So, this is the date, it's going to be August the 18th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the James City County Rec Center. And we really encourage people to come out and to register. There's a QR code. If you take a picture of that with your phone, it'll lead you and prompt you to the registration for the event. And then also, the URL is there that you can join, and so we would love to have a big turnout from York County to come and be part of the process. And we also, a very important thing, is that we are providing childcare for children. So we...
Very good.
Yes. We're providing childcare and hopefully some refreshments as well.
But you're hoping to get the younger people out.
We do. We do. We want to make sure everybody feels welcome and that everybody is able to participate, even if you have small children. And so, you know, the goal of this is, is to learn, the citizens to learn about the locality's resilience, and also that, you know, we want the locality representatives to come as well. And so, to learn about the strengths and the needs and to develop the priority actions that will be implemented over the next year. And so, the implementation process is 12 months. And so, the county staff will work with the implementation team, in this case, Old Dominion University, and led by Jess. And they will work, have monthly meetings, implementation team meetings, and will even help to find funding to try to incorporate, to support the implementation of the resilience action checklist, the five items that are on that. So, we intend to be a very good collaborator, a very good teammate, and to work with the locality to achieve these goals.
Is that something we want to put out on our IT tool?
Yeah. I've got a question.
To get rapid feedback.
How is this being funded for you all?
Sure. So, we have two sources of funding, from the NOAA Coastal Zone Management Program.
NOAA?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the, from Virginia DCR, and then, sorry, DEQ. The other source of funding that we have is from the Virginia Environmental Endowment.
Okay. Nothing from Chesapeake Bay?
No, not for this one. However, a lot of, certainly for ICAR, in our case, we have a state appropriation for collaborations with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and that funding helps to support both Dr. Lee and Mr. Larkin. So, those are, we get a little bit of that support indirectly.
Bits and pieces.
Through some, through some staff time. I will say that we can't promise it will be successful in bringing in any additional funding, because we all know everything is exceptionally competitive these days, but we can provide support to try. And the other thing that we can provide is, often when you're a university and you have great ideas, you're able to get faculty involved. So, we now have a faculty roster program for not just our locality, or our three universities, but universities from across Virginia, of faculty who are interested when ideas come up. We can actually match some of the opportunity list items with some of their areas of expertise to see if they have availability to jump in and help. So sometimes that in-kind support when the funding doesn't come through.
Advancing their education as they go along with being able to project successfully.
Yeah.
You were asking a question.
I was just asking, is this a topic we want to put on our IT tool for sending out to the flash tool?
For the flash vote survey? We could certainly consider it, see if it works with the ladies' place.
So, just with flash, the flash, though, we just ask questions. Are we, we trying to get the questions to feed to somebody to go to the meeting?
Well, you've got a list of 10 topics, and they're all tied to resiliency, and you might, you might want to ask the community, what would they rank them at, or what would their top three choices be?
First of all, you're going to have to explain resilience.
Consideration.
Certainly.
Let's take, I think we should take it one step at a time and see how we get into this. I think that's a good idea. I think let's staff look into it. I think let's staff look into it and see whether it's practical for us to do it at this time.
But we got, but we got a short window though. It's less than two weeks is this community engagement.
You want to get it done in just two weeks? I thought we were talking.
August 18th.
Trying to advertise the fact that they're having the meeting?
That we need, that we need to do.
That's the important thing to advertise, not so much their opinions are.
In a county like ours, you end up with a problem because you're up there in James City County doing this. You got his district up there.
Come on, Caitlin, you stood up.
I'm sitting up as far as I can. My back hurts. No, I'm just saying that we're way down here, District 5. We're on the other end, we're down near Hampton. You know, getting people to participate is going to be great up there, and down here it's going to be a little tough. And we have a different environment. They're way higher in elevation down there, fewer people, and we're crammed in and close to, close to the beach. Different attitudes.
So do we, do we have those 10 topics that's already been, already been chosen?
Yep. So we have the 10.
Nine.
Well, nine-ish.
Nine together.
That we have. But the, at the workshop, we do offer the opportunity if there are things that we really need to add to the list.
Is it good?
Trying to think on, think on my feet here.
Off your chair.
The top two are on the list for sure.
So we know that we have these two. We need to select more from these as kind of the highest priority opportunities.
Well, in order, in order to get good engagement in less than two weeks, we need to really put it in front of the folks, say, hey, listen, here, here are the things we're going to attempt to accomplish. We need your input on this. We need to get that out in front of people pretty, pretty quickly so they can plan accordingly. A flash vote may be one way of doing it. Broadcast night, the website, of course, is another way. However, but we got to, we can't just go, hey, come to the RAF.
Caitlin has a suggestion.
Hi, just for the benefit of you all, we've been working with our public affairs in the prior weeks, so this has been advertised in Citizen News already as well as on the social media. And then we're also working on contacting some of the homeowners association and community groups for that direct.
Homeowners Association.
That's good.
I will be, yes.
But it needs to be more than just saying, hey, there's a, there's a thing on the 18th. They need to understand what the opportunities are, they need to come and consider.
We need your help.
So we expect the staff to be there. That's what you just said.
But when we put out the information to the citizens, we want them to help us with this.
It's an opportunity to make input, to help us. Okay, that's what it is. But you have to understand what you're doing. You got to be willing to drive, you know, 30 miles to get up there.
Oh, I think you can manage.
Not a problem. I'll be tired.
I average twice a day, so I think you can handle it.
Let's get people there between 4:00 and 7:00.
You may, I may be joking about it, but it's going to be tough.
It's an issue.
Okay.
I would say, you know, Caitlin, after the meeting, we can circle back with you and talk about, are there any kind of alternative strategies that we need to try to quickly think about to make sure that we can enable that public participation?
I'd invite you to go down to TAB Library, hold a meeting there.
I understand what you're doing, yes.
Well, I mean, seriously, you're right. The center, you got three districts right there.
The population is actually down in this area.
All the service office.
Little part of the county. But what you're trying to do is not just your county, you're trying to do it for James City County and Williamsburg, and that's why you're having it up in the historic triangle area.
Right.
That's right. But during the year of implementation, there will be opportunities, if there are other meetings that people want to have in person versus virtual, they could be held in York County if it was more convenient.
As long as it's not virtual, I'll be happy to attend.
Yeah, and that is something where our team has made a commitment to do the meetings in person. We are right across the water at ODU. I will say that the tunnel is a little bit tricky these days. But that's something where, you know, provide, again, using that iCar funding, we're going to make sure that we're doing those meetings in person.
Get better participation, I think that way.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions, kind of in general. What was the genesis for RAF? What was it that motivated this program to get put together that it was, had become known as the RAF, and who was championing that? And how do y'all measure your success at the end of the year? How do you look back and go, we were successful, we met our marks? How do y'all do that?
Elizabeth, you've been, you've been here since the beginning, so.
That's her polite way of saying I'm the oldie moldy.
I was not going to put it that way.
So actually, in 2015, so I used to be a professor at the law school at William &amp; Mary before I went over to UVA.
I'm going to have to ask you to speak up a little bit.
Sorry. And I directed something there called the Virginia Coastal Policy Center. And that center and the institute at UVA, where I am actually now, co-hosted an event to talk to localities in coastal Virginia about sea level rise and increasing flooding and increasingly severe storm events, and what could we do about it? And afterwards, some of the representatives of the coastal planning district commission said, we really need to have some kind of a program to help spark this conversation among our localities, right? Part of it is, as you all know, better than I know, you know, there's schools and there's transportation and emergency services right there in front of you needing funding. And something with a longer time horizon, it's hard to bring it to the fore. So at first, people talked about a report card, numeric, A through F, you know? And we felt like that wasn't, first of all, a great way to establish a relationship with the locality, to hit them with a bad, you know, and leave, here's your bad grade, see you later. Exactly. We did some research, some graduate students in planning at UVA researched other report cards and scorecards and found they didn't really move the needle on policies and programs. After they make a splash, but they don't necessarily move that needle and make progress. So that's when we developed the three steps, where we're going to stay with localities after the scoring. And we did it as a numeric score rather than an A to F because we don't want people focusing on that. We want them focusing on, these are the things that we can do to become more resilient and, you know, the positive path forward. And so to answer your question about measuring success, part of it is how many communities that we've worked with and we've been partnering with the planning district commissions each time, and they've invited us to come in and do it. So that really is the biggest success to us, that they want us to come because it is at no cost to the local government, other than the staff time to assist us. And when we do the scoring, we do it in partnership with the staff, which we really appreciate to make sure we get it right. And also then, we ask them to participate in the monthly implementation team meetings so that they can help connect us to resources. So the fact that the PDCs and the local governments actually want to work with us is the biggest success. But then seeing the completion of their checklist of items and seeing how they've gotten more resilient. I mean, one of the ones that we love, that's a very small example, is on the eastern shore, the town of Anancock had a repeatedly flooding Harbor Masters parking lot. They're not as low as a lot of the eastern shore localities, so they don't have as much flooding in general, but that parking lot was just recurrently flooding. So we had a fellow that was paid for by the C-grant program from NOAA, and he connected us with a design firm, Clark Nixon, who drew up designs for things they could do to get rid of the flooding. And then when some grant funds became available, they had what they call shovel-ready designs to apply for the grant, and they got it. So they were so happy that they could get that expertise to them when they needed it to be ready.
Relationships.
Right. So that's what we're trying to do with the faculty roster as well, that Jessica mentioned that we're trying to bring the expertise in.
Yeah, and I think the relationship building about this is so, so important. When the funding opportunities come, it's usually a very short turnaround compared to what it actually takes to get the right partners at the table, to come up with the right designs, to come up with the project and get the project done. And that's assuming that it's something that is going out to build a thing, whether it is upsizing a culvert or installing a living shoreline. There's other things that help with resilience too. It's those community building aspects, things that we used to do. I came up to Virginia four and a half years ago from North Carolina, where we had villages where they know that they experience hurricanes often, so they all know, they have lists of who needs help, who stayed, who goes. Like, that's not something that you necessarily need a big infrastructure grant for, but you do need the relationships and the willingness to have someone be the local caretaker for that process. So what RAF really helps to do is to get these things started for you. And once we leave, if we are able to look back and say, oh, here's these new relationships, here's this new willingness to try to think of, we're going to champion this project and we're going to figure out how to get it done, whether or not we have to look for creative sources of funding, those are the kinds of things that I see as successes as well.
All right, thank you.
So have you, have you, you know, we're surrounded by military. Forty percent of the land in York County is federal property protected. How are you involving, I know it's a PDC, they have military presence, but how else are you incorporating military into your studies?
So one thing that we do in that year of implementation is we try to grow the implementation team. And we have discussions from the beginning and say, who else needs to be at this table? As Jessica said, the relationship building. And often it'll be something like someone will say, we need, you know, to contact the commander of the adjacent base to see if they have a liaison they can assign. Or, you know, this one church is so active in the community, they really have to be here. They've got the volunteers lined up, they could reach the folks that might be more socially vulnerable. So we try to expand the team throughout the year. If there's an item that involves something like infrastructure that, you know, goes to a base, then from the beginning, we invite the base, the staff to come. So it really depends on what the items are on the checklist.
So in Hampton Roads, there's roughly 17 different jurisdictions, from Virginia Beach, you know, all the way up to James City County, Williamsburg. And, you know, you're touching on only three of them here, which, because we operate as historical triangle. But, but we are all part of that larger PDC. Sheilich is a member of that, our representative's that. And they do a lot of coastal resiliency studies and work. I mean, gosh, for the last, at least 20 years, I know they've been doing things like the Dutch Study and all kinds of stuff. So I think we're kind of unique in, although we're a historical triangle. I think our, our resiliency and effort really deals around, a lot around tourism and the unique historical aspects. That's why it's called the historical triangle, right? But the, the things that we've got to really focus on are like the communications, the vertical communications, the transportation, it's up and down, you know, through Hampton Road to get, get your stuff from one place to the next, shipping, you know, that, the big stuff. And it's, obviously, we've got to have both sides of it. That affects our overall, our resiliency, if you will. It really does. We can't, we can't operate independently of that. And then the studies the PDC comes up with, the grants, the money they give from the state, pass-through money, whatever, it bleeds over to us also into Virginia Beach and stuff like that. So I, this is, you're taking on, you're taking on a bite size, I think, you know, a bite size piece of this, but the overall in Hampton Roads.
That's a good time.
Bigger stuff.
One bite better than no bite.
But also, we should tell you, so again.
Bite, bite, bite.
The Hampton Roads Planning District Commission is our partner in this, and we actually went to them first. And their chief resilience officer, Ben McFarland, who you probably know, will be attending the workshop. But they suggested that we work with these three localities because, like you said, there's a joint vulnerability kind of thing to, to the housing, for the workers, for the tourism, et cetera, that they felt like it'd be great to work with this segment. There's a lot of attention, as you said, to the coastal flooding for Norfolk and Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, but they felt like you all have some things in common that it would make it good to work, focus on these three. So that's, that's exactly how we got to this.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very, very much. This has been very interesting, looking forward, hopefully we get a lot of people turn out for the workshop. We'll try to do that.
Thank you, that'd be great. Welcome your help.
You know, I'm glad that you started to do this, even though it's been doing it for a number of years. But as we said, bite, 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 moving forward.
Exactly, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Mr. Perryman?
Okay, so it's, we'll save him for another meeting. With that, I will move to the consent calendar. And let me see. We've got, item number three is special use permit, a two-year extension of a deadline for establishing a car wash at 6440 George Washington Memorial Highway. We've seen this one before, and this is the second time through. Number four is a request for refund of cigarette tax. All right, that one I think has been explained. Number five is a request for refund of business tangible property taxes. And then number six is request refund for real estate taxes for disabled veterans. Number seven is a request for refund of real estate taxes also. So anybody have any, one they would like to pull for discussion?
Can we chat about number three for just a minute?
Okay, number three is the, oh, yes, you and I both asked questions about that today, so, thank you, Earl, you going to talk to that?
Yes, I am.
So this is for the Tommy Car, Tommy's Car Wash application. So they have, they were approved two years ago. They're bumping up against their deadline, which is in August. And so what they're requesting is an extension to their special use permit so they can continue their work. If you've been by the site, you've seen they've started the work, but our requirements are that they have a foundation in the ground or otherwise they. If you don't extend it, they would just have to go back through the full process before the planning commission board supervises.
They'd have to go through and pay again for it. And I talked to Earl before, we don't have any limit on the number of times that we can renew a special use permit, depending on the circumstances, but it's up to the board to decide whether or not we wish to continue with that.
This is the first time they've come forward, other than their original.
This is their first time.
Is it two-year standard?
Yes, sir. It's in the ordinance that if there are any special use permits approved, it lasts for 24 months. If you don't do, if you don't establish your business, you know, we consider foundation on the ground, then, within that 24 months, then it's expired.
Earl, could you describe what they have done?
So they have gotten their site plan approval, they've gotten their LDA started, so their land disturbance activity permit.
And as you can see, they've started taking trees down, started working in the building to close it up so they can take it down. They are moving forward, I think it just, you know, financial-wise, they just had a little bit of a slowdown and now, but now they're ready to roll. They just can't get the building torn down and their foundation in the ground by the 15th of this month.
So you're saying the impediment to this point has been some financial stresses?
I'm here from Tommy, I can add color, if it's appropriate.
If you, if stuff, that'd be great, yeah.
The road widening project on 17 was a significant delay for us. VDOT ended up buying a piece of land from us, and we had to move some utilities and some signage and that, that ate up, I think, eight or nine months of that time period. And, I mean, we've worked with VDOT all along the way, those things just take time, especially when you're selling chunks of land. So that was a significant delay for us. We had to come to an agreement with the Harley dealership next to us. That was a challenge, getting ahold of the owner and getting that taken care of, that was another couple of months there. So we've been pressing as hard as we can, it's just the VDOT project and the Harley situation ate up almost half of our allotted time. As he said, I mean, we've actually got demo crews ready next week to start. The whole building will be gone within a matter of a month. It's just those, those couple items just.
I'm glad to see the activity there now, and thanks for putting some color around the delays, it's kind of been a black hole, not sure what's going on.
Yeah, there's a lot of things behind the scenes.
What's your, what's your confidence level with this two-year extension, you'll be able to?
I mean, like I said, that building will be gone in six weeks max. And we're, we've, we've been on calls for the last three months with the franchisor. The contractor's in place, the subs are, I mean, the contract is signed, we're, we're ready to go.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks for the background.
Thank you very much.
What's your estimated timeframe, would you say?
We built one in Norfolk that was a challenge and that took eight months. So, I mean, provided everything goes okay, we're projecting six to seven months till, to open.
Okay.
Trust me, it's been sitting there, you guys have seen it, we want it open faster than anybody else.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next one was item number four, the re-cigarette tax.
Yeah, this was just different, and I hadn't heard of it before, and I think just for sake of telling our public what it's about, is worth taking a couple of minutes and just describing it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, Mark, I'd ask questions. I know your staff has responded to me. It was, why are we, why are we refunding anything related to cigarette tax? How does that work? How do they, how does the proprietor come back and ask for that tax and show us that in fact he's owed that? I don't know if there's anybody here that can speak to that.
I'm just, I'm just.
Mr. Tim, were you comfortable doing?
Mr. Tim, were you comfortable doing that?
Yes.
So I, I know she's working with Ms. Webb on, on this a little bit.
So yes, I talked to Commissioner Revenue about this. They sell the cigarette stamps in rolls of fifteen thousand. And so our code allows for them to be returned and refunded as long as the commissioner of cert can ensure that they haven't been tampered with. So they bought them, they never fixed them to the cigarettes, they never sold the cigarettes. They have stopped doing that kind of business in York County, and so they've returned the stamps that can be resold now to other.
They were still sealed.
And, yeah, they were still.
Sure, so.
They've not been tampered with, right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is more for the public's information. Thank you.
If there are any more, no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Motion made by Mr. Holroyd is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mrs. Noe?
Yes.
And Mr. Carey.
Thank you very much, now we'll have open discussion, if anybody has any comments they'd like to make quickly, it'd be very nice. Who would like to go first? Would you like to go first?
Yes.
Should we speak to the floor?
I'll try.
So I, I just heard.
Anything else to do? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
It's informal.
I just heard from several people recently that the, the dump is now requiring commercial vehicle traffic coming in, be automatic dump trailers now. And so.
Be what?
Automatic dump trailers. You can't come in and unload the, the trailers now, so I'm getting some calls and pushback on why that is. So that's my question.
Don't know.
So.
Anybody can answer that question? He was here, right behind you.
Rob?
Rob.
Oh, I'll have to look into that. Generally, when they have a long line, you can go to the transfer station, a dump trailer gets in and out of the way and is gone. So they may push them forward because, because of the traffic. So that, that sounds unusual, but there might be a circumstance, so, but I will check and.
If you could.
I'll reach back out to you, sir.
That'd be great.
Anybody else, would you say something? Go ahead.
I had two items, Madam Chair. So first topic, I'll begin with a meeting that I had last week with Ms. Adilia Thompson, Peninsula Community Foundation CEO. You recall, she presented to us back in March, on March fourth, and it was a presentation on aging. And there were some follow-up questions from that, and Mr. Shepherd, I believe you asked, what is the financial profile of the older residents in the Peninsula? And they've had a young intern working at the Community Foundation for the last several months. That person has provided a research project and generated a report. I've passed the report on to Mr. Bellamy, and he'll include that in our POS folder. You know, not surprisingly, JCC in York County topped the list for retirement incomes beyond just social security income, high pension income. Versus our counterparts in Hampton and Chesapeake, who were quite, quite low in comparison. As I said, I'll leave the report with Mr. Bellamy. The second report that she provided was how older residents watch program could help. She really liked the county to consider.
Hampton doesn't, Hampton has a small group doing this now, and then.
So this, this is modeled off of Arlington and one other northern Virginia.
Neighborhood, our neighborhood watch, it ties in with, within the neighborhood. Just keeping track of your neighbors, and if you don't see them for a while, or you know they're older, is just to knock on the door or something like that. Because we don't want to know what happens.
Do you want to read the rest?
No, go ahead. I can't help it, I'm sorry.
So it describes a system very much like Neighborhood Watch. But a successful watch program for elder care basically has to also consider social services, so things like food and transportation, and even possibly medical or healthcare needs. And that's, and that's again what she has asked us to consider as a county. The, the report is with Mark, and he'll include it in our information folder. I thought it was a very good piece of work. Intern had obviously done some great work for them in a very short period of time.
The foundation has two interns that have really done a terrific job, and they've been loaned from the colleges. One's been paid for by a bank, and the other one's been from the college. And their enthusiasm, we move forward so fast because their energy in getting things done. And I'd, I'd love to be able to keep them, but it's just a one-year type of thing, we'll see what happens.
I thought you wanted to get out of here early.
Rubbing it up, rubbing it, I start talking, I, I told you, I'm a motor mouth, I'm sorry. Anything else?
Yes, I did, madam chair.
Oh, good, go for it.
So the second, second topic, not as pleasant. Heather, I could get you to pull this up. I'm gonna begin with some photographs, and this is what the board is seeing here is. Progress on Fenton Mill project, and we have had some issues of.
Where is this, where is this?
Fenton Mill is right at.
My glasses on, I can do it.
District one.
District one, right at, behind the fire station five, on Newman Road.
That's not me.
Yeah, security alert.
So this, this is the end of Indiana Lane, which is in the existing Scimeno Hills subdivision. And there's a cut-through obviously created between this and the area behind it, which is the construction area for Fenton Mill. This was never approved in the site plans. There was in fact a buffer zone there that's been removed. So a number of issues associated with zoning and compliance. And if you look down in the bottom right corner picture, you can see cracks in the asphalt already where the heavy vehicles passing through there have already started to damage the, the asphalt. I'm just very concerned that if we allow that to continue, we would very quickly have a Springfield Road situation of heavy construction traffic over a, a road that really isn't designed to handle it.
Are they taking traffic through there? Is that why the silt fence is down?
There is, there is tire tracks through there before the rain came last Friday, yes. The next one, Mark, please. This is the results of the rain from last weekend. And you can see the silt fence, you can see the, the collection pit that they have there, which is supposed to collect all this water, but you see the result. It's, it's flowing down the, down the slope into Scimeno Hills, this is Alabama, I think it's Alabama Lane, and this is the backyard of one of the homes. And this is not the first time this year, and I think this is the third time it's been reported, but the fourth time in fact it's happened in, since December. So we just, all of that, all of that earth that's been piled up, much, much higher elevation now behind Alabama Lane than used to exist, so it's, it's funneling all the rain in that direction. And finally, the next photo, it's just the amount of dust that's being created. This is one truck going through there on, I think it was Monday afternoon. And it's just, it's just very, very dusty, and you know, that whole Scimeno Hills area is, is a family-oriented community, a lot of young kids in that area, and they're just being denied the opportunity to enjoy outdoor life. So Mark, I, you know, I, I turned this over to you last week, I asked for some help from the county. I, I think we need to get to the point where we get the attention of the construction management and get some of these actions fixed, and certainly in the case of the cut-through, that, that just needs to be stopped. If you want to brief the board on the actions taken today, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, today, the contractor and the developer were served with a stop work order. And so, and I've already had a phone call from the contractor today. They have set up an appointment with us for Thursday, they'll be having a meeting with public work staff. And they are, according to the conversation I had with them today, they're very anxious to get this resolved. Get it where, get the project where it needs to be.
The number of violations is excessive. I think that's, that's a point worth making, this is not gonna be simple.
Where is the developer from?
York County.
Oh, dear.
He actually resides in Mr. Holroyd's district.
Well, that's, that's the subcontractor.
Well.
But the developer is, I believe, in Virginia Beach.
Virginia Beach, that is correct.
It's Virginia Beach, I thought. Okay, thank you.
I want to raise it to the board's attention, I, you know, obviously don't want this to downgrade into a Springfield issue, tranquility. They've done a very good job of turning that around and being very positive, and the neighborhood is quite pleased with it, I want the same results here.
Okay, thank you.
I can either water truck. And Running Man.
Yes.
You know, and the Running Man's six hundred, six hundred unit neighborhood, and right in the middle of it was a place called Sugarberry. And so, you know, you can imagine all the, this well-established neighborhood, and then they, Harrison Lear, which was the developer, decided to make this nice, beautiful twenty-seven acres in the middle of it. They just, all the people were upset because they just lost all that forest and everything, and they were gonna be looking at the homes, and we went through this. And what was happening is that the work was stirring up, as construction will, stirs up a lot of dust, right? And so the construction company actually went over and hosed the houses down, you know, just to clean, to clean them. And then they had this process where they would, during dusty areas, they'd spray it down, that's, that's what they're supposed to be doing. And so it can be done.
It can be done. Tranquility is a good example of where it was done successfully. All of the same issues that, that were dealt with, so.
These issues aren't going to go away as the developable property in the county is adjacent to already developed property. So we're gonna continue seeing this. So does, do, do we set a good expectation with their, with the, our developer community, that when they start their project, they're gonna need to take things into consideration, like water trucks to keep the dust down and so forth? Or do we need to reinforce that?
We generally have pre-construction meetings with these folks, and they have an understanding of what the expectation is.
The most significant part of that picture that I saw was the mud flows. My farm in Jacksonville, they said, oh yeah, I gotta, I gotta change the structure. And they come up next to it, put a subdivision right next to it, next thing I know, we have, we have a creek going across the middle of our farm. And, and then flooding those people out on the main road and going down the road. So those, the development, development will alter, I don't care what they say, it'll alter the landscape and the flow of water. And so we, that's just totally unacceptable. I mean, hey, it's just completely, I know they get away with the sheet flow part and all that, but that's just totally unacceptable. That stuff needs, they have to build a wall, a barrier to flow that push out water somewhere else, but you can't be flooding people off their property. So anyway, that was personal.
Yes, my question is, how did it get there? I mean, how did this get to this point? From, from York County standpoint, are we sending inspectors out and they're missing this, or we're not sending inspectors out?
So, as, this is all, I've, I've been on vacation last week, sent a walk back into this.
Welcome home.
Yes, thank you. With, you know, immediately. With a, with a couple emails about this. But from what I know about it so far, there's been a change in leadership in the contractor and the developer. We had a good relationship, as I understand it, with the developer, and they were very good at communicating and receiving feedback from the neighborhood. And then the, that person went on to another job, and they replaced them, and the new person is not, is not that. And so I, I would say that there's been a few changes that have allowed us to get here.
In fairness, the early stump clearing portion of the work went very well. And there were some issues with mud getting on the road, and they were very fast to respond to that. All, all early signs suggested we had a pretty good contractor working that. But it's gotten, it's gotten out of control recently. I wonder, I wonder the extent to which it's a bigger project than they are used to handling. I'm not sure.
Well, that's something that you're all looking into now, right?
I would say, you know, when we have an issue like this, we certainly have to stay on top of it. And so maybe we do more spot inspections along the way when we know that we've got issues with the contractor, and we stay on top of it before it gets to this point.
And, and I one hundred percent agree. Matter of fact, when I had this conversation with Mr. Holroyd about the issue on Friday, I called Mr. Krieger and said, please make sure that we have someone watching the site over the weekend, and that, you know, they're not creating any more trouble over the weekend. So we, we're gonna take a extra watchful eye on this particular project until they get back to the point where we feel that it should be.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Tom?
Yeah, I've, I've spent, since the last time we had a meeting, I've spent an enormous amount of time talking to neighbors, your neighbors, my neighbors, probably some of your neighbors too, about the intersection.
Sorry.
Seventeen, Victory, and one thirty-four, those two intersections. I did quite understand what they were doing in terms of putting up the barrels, you know, and, and I thought it was just a, it was a kind of a test to see how much pain we could go through down there. So, you know, I'm still waiting for the answer. I did, I've, Rossi just got back from leave, and then he walked into it.
I sent a letter to Rossi to, for answers, and he's forwarded on to somebody else, because I had a, a long letter from.
So I mean, well, people are, you know, it, it's, eventually the road will be better, but we gotta wait five years here to get this, get this all done, because another project coming in right behind that one. So this, I want people that are watching this, the staff to understand it, to, you know, that we are, I mean, we're experiencing ourselves, we're asking questions, all the lights. I mean, here's a great example. If you come off Victory Boulevard off sixty-four, okay, and that's, that's about like now probably eight lanes. You come in there, and you get, you start scrunching down, and you get in front of the assisted living facility, the T-Mark, I mean Walmart. And then, then you're, you're starting, the lane starts backing up, okay? And it will back up from Kroger all the way to Seventeen, and that's a huge gap right there, full of cars. And it's all going westbound. I think it's eastbound, going eastbound. And so one of, one of the bounds, I don't know which way it's going.
Thank you very much, that's really what you're doing.
But then you get, you get, you get down there, so you're up against Seventeen, cars are waiting, trying to get across. But you look across Seventeen, going towards thirty-four, and that whole section is there, it's got, you know, less than a tenth of a mile, but it's full of cars. So where are people gonna go to get across the road? So my question was, you know, how are you sequencing the lights between one thirty-four and Victory, and Seventeen and Victory? So that you end up flushing out or giving us some space, because what I'm afraid is gonna start happening is people are gonna get anxious and to try to sneak across and start jamming up Seventeen. And then you create another problem. And, and so they're backing it up, and it's gonna affect the businesses all down in there.
When I'm coming to the meeting now, I don't go, I don't do that because I get so backed up, I can't get onto Seventeen because of all the traffic. So now I'm going to sixty-four and coming up around the back way.
Coming up that way of Four Uses Boulevard now. So every, I mean, I would, I, I, I know this is terrible, but I suggested, one of the guys that worked over on Production Drive, he was having, you know, four or five lights trying to just get through it. I said, well, you know, somehow you gotta work yourself over to one thirty-four and see if that works. Well, how do you do that? They go through Tab Lakes, okay? And so, Tab Lakes, you know, I'm probably gonna hear hell raising from Tab Lakes, but the point is, this is a jammed up mess that's gonna last.
But if you go into Tab Lakes, you're gonna have to go down and then turn around.
It's quicker, I tell you, it's still quicker. And the problem, the problem is that we're gonna have to live with this for the next five years.
But the whole, the whole problem also is that if we don't accept the money for it to be done, when we have it, we lose the money.
It goes away.
So we have to go ahead with the projects, even though everybody's a little hot on the cover.
They can do it, they're, 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 they're hearing from VDOTs, hearing from us, and making adjustments when they can. But I want to have answers from people when they talk to us, okay? I don't want them having to blow through neighborhoods to get, everybody starts winding around in there, but it's gonna probably happen. Also, I, I've been getting, over the years, since we put that sidewalk in on thirty-four, one thirty-four, in front of Kirkwood Church, that goes over to the Victory Y. I've gotten a lot of compliments and from folks, and they're passing along that the board, we appreciate what the board supervisors, staff did to put that sidewalk in there. And I'm not, I'd be honest with you, I've never seen that many compliments about a sidewalk since I've been on the board, but it's, people are using it, they, they appreciate the crossover there. It's a community area that gets a lot of activity, a lot of walking, and so that's good. And so there'll be more and more coming.
Any more comments?
So, yes, I've been having some conversations too, been working, talking with Rossi, and he's been very responsive, appreciate that. Like I said, there's gonna be a lot of conversation about that, and I wonder if, if maybe we should petition, petition VDOT to have a community engagement liaison that can help answer some of these questions.
It's Rossi.
Well, but. Outside of Rossi, I, I think that might, that might be somebody with a better fit for that, as opposed to us just being the, the middlemen.
He's sent it to Public Affairs.
Right, but anyway, just, but, yeah, we're doing the same thing.
Right, I know, that's part of, one of the things we have to do.
Oh, yeah, 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 right.
I mean, that's, we're gonna take, they're gonna take the grief, even though we don't build roads, you know, I spend half my time working road issues. Filling holes.
You want it.
So, you know, and that's, and that's.
So now you have it.
Agreed, but I don't know, the, the point is that people, a lot of them get frustrated and can't figure out how to find the information. You pointed out last meeting. You pointed out last meeting that, you know, I think we should, that might have been the point there, but they pointed out that there's a site you can go to, we have it on, we have it on our site, you can go to VDOT, and you got their site, that tells you everything that's going on, so, I think, you know, citizens just kinda get used to, who do they go, who do they go to?
And, and that's...
They go to supervisors, we publish our names and numbers out there.
Okay.
And, and I just wanted to, well, I just wanted to share that, as a member of the Victory YMCA Advisory Board, I attended a planning session this past Thursday with the Peninsula YMCA community, we were looking at our 2030 impact, brainstorming, what is it that the YMCA's of the area could bring to the community to help better the community, what services can the YMCA provide, and in this area, that included Middlesex, Urbana, as well as, as well as down here too, so, I just want to encourage everybody who are members of the YMCA to go to your local YMCA, find your director, and say, hey, I have some ideas to help bring that to the table, we just don't want to do this in a small vacuum, like to get as much of the community involved as possible, so, again, if you're members of YMCA, go talk to your local YMCA director and say, hey, here's, here's where my business for 2030 will apply.
I'm also scheduled for that set of...
You got, okay, I come up to you, okay, good.
There's a lot, yes. Anything else?
We're gonna go on.
Go, go.
All right.
Agree, yeah.
We do not have a closed meeting, so we are going to adjourn, and the next meeting will be at 6 o'clock Tuesday, August 19th, in the board room upstairs, and thank you all for joining us this evening.
Very good, thank you.